I would like to do the swearing in of the elected village trustees. So first we'll do the call to order. Darlene, would you like to call the meeting or would you like to do a roll call first?
Absolutely. Trustee Anson.
Here.
Trustee Doro. Trustee Myers.
Here.
Trustee Walshleger.
Here.
Trustee Lutkey.
Here.
Trustee Connor.
Here.
President Vanerstall.
Here. At this time, it was missed at the last meeting. Our clerk, Igle, will do the swearing in of the newly elected village trustees.
Let's start with trustee Myers. If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name, having been elected.
I, Michael Myers, plead elected.
To the office of village trustee.
To the office of village trustee.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Trustee Doro, raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I state your name, having been elected.
I, Donna Doro, have been, hadn't been elected.
To the office of village trustee.
To the office of village trustee.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
And trustee Anson, if you would raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I state your name, having been elected.
I, trustee Jeffrey Anson, haven't been elected.
To the office of village trustee.
To the office of village trustee.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
And will faithfully discharge duties of said office.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations to all three of you. I know myself and I'm sure I speak for the rest of the board. Look forward to serving with you. Again, you were incumbents and were reelected by the Pete citizens of the village. Obviously, that makes a statement, but congratulations to all three of you. It's an honor to serve with you and I look forward to the next, you know, the time ahead, serving with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will have the pledge of allegiance led by trustee Anson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, look for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time.
Hey, chief.
At this time, we will have public comments. These are for items that are not on the agenda. Do we have any public people that are on the meeting that would like to speak? And have comment on items that are not on the agenda.
I do have them unmuted as well. I see Trevor and a different phone number, but I, they should be unmuted.
This is Steve from Beer Snobs.
Okay, Steve, if you could state your name and address, thank you for tuning into the meeting and then you'll be able to speak just like when we're in the boardroom.
Steven Berger, 122 Cottonwood Avenue, Heartland. The only thing is, is it comes up with the enter meeting password. Don't have that.
Okay, we have you on audio. Ryan, is there anything to help, Steve?
It's only audio, correct?
Never mind. Thank you.
Steve, you're good then?
I am good.
Okay. Any other public comments from anyone? Okay, since there are none, it has been requested to, by the administrator, especially with us doing the meeting this way in Zoom, we have an item on the agenda that is in a different position. So what I'm going to request from the board, the first three items on the agenda, we can move items on the agenda, but it is a little bit different than how our code lists that we would go through the items. If a board member would want to move to have item six moved forward to make it easier for the people that are here for that item, we could do that if we all agreed.
All right, I'll move to move item six up to the top of the agenda for tonight to accommodate those that are on the call.
I'll second. This is trustee Lutkey.
It's been moved by trustee Connor, seconded by trustee Lutkey to move that item up on the agenda to assist in, you know, saving time for the people that are here to speak on item six. So at this time, I would ask for a vote of the board on that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, thank you, guys. So at this time, we will have a consideration of a motion to approve a dog walk and park party on August 29th, 2020. This is by Kelly Zimmerman and this is the Emma Loves Dogs Foundation.
Good evening, everybody. Hi. My name is Kelly Yogers and I am the recreation director for the Village of Heartland. And we have the event organizers of this fundraiser for Team Emma, Kelly Zimmerman and Jeff and Tammy Merton here to answer any questions that you may have. I'm going to kind of talk about some things that we've talked over with them and to clarify some stuff, Matt. The event organizers met with staff a few months ago, I believe at the end of March, to discuss this event. They're interested in doing this at Nixon. They are Heartland residents, as some of you already know about Emma Mertens. We met with rec department, DPW, police and fire, went over the event. In your packet, there is an overview of what the event, the Emma Loves Dogs header. And basically, it's a fun, it's, the goal is to raise money for Emma Loves Dogs Foundation and celebrate Emma and her legacy with the local community. First off, if you could please go to the map, please go to the map that says ex-village staffs propose placing of food trucks. You'll see here where we discussed the event over with the organizers. And originally, they had the food trucks on the grass, what we suggested. And they accepted that the food trucks would go on the east side of the parking lot, along kind of where the warming shed is and along parallel to the beer garden. So trucks aren't going on the grass and sinking through. Also, if you could please go back to the other map with the yellow circles that mark where all the dogway stations are. I didn't miss one. There's another dogway station in the corner by the railroad tracks and Maple Avenue. I just didn't see the red mark. But here, you'll see the two, the path, the original path, because they'd like to do a walk with the dogs during the event. The original path is highlighted in orange. We suggested that they do the green path. So they stay in the park and we, they don't have to cross any streets or go downtown. And they said that they're okay with that and everything. They are going to have portage ons, that's marked in X. There also have bounce houses for the kids. And also, let me see, there, there's also, there are two events that are going on on August 29th. The sidewalk sale is from 10 to 3, but that location of the event is on Pauling Avenue by Hoggers Pub. Emma's fundraiser will be from 3 to 10. Both parties, the organizers for the sidewalk trail sale and the organizers for Team Emma's event have talked to each other. They do know there's a back-to-back and both parties feel like there's not going to be a conflict. They're good. Team Emma's going to have organizers help direct traffic and everything. This was brought to the village board meeting last Monday on May 4th. One thing that we did not bring up was waiving the fees for the park. After the meeting on Monday, May 4th, I spoke to Tim Helquist, who is the chair for the park and rec board, and he said he was fine with fees being waived, but he did ask that the food truck's fees policy, uh, fees still get paid and that's $75 per truck. So that's one thing that you guys would have to make a decision on. And now I will give it to Kelly and Jeff and Tammy. If you have any questions, you may ask them or you may ask me. Any question?
My concern was that they're at the conflict of something that has already been established, right? The beer snobs and the other.
No, it's just a sidewalk sale and they ask from 10 to 3. Nick Miller did talk to Kelly Zimmerman about that. And at 2:45, Nick Miller usually lets his vendors go and get their cars, which will be parked at Nixon Park. But Team Emma fundraiser organizers have volunteers to help with traffic and everything. So I think it'll just be traffic leaving, traffic coming. And Nick Miller, I believe, even offered you guys a booth at the event. So there's definitely support on both ends. Both, both organizing, our organizers. Any other questions for myself or the Mertens and Kelly?
My question would be for enters for the beer garden. I know that they had an agreement, but I didn't see the agreement in there.
We have talked to them. I, I don't think we've got a signed copy of our proposal, but we can certainly get that for you. We have confirmed with them that they're on board and they are a supporter as well.
And I, I have talked to him as well and he knows about the event and everything. And he said he's talked to them and everything.
He's got the biggest heart ever, so I wouldn't think he would do anything. Coach Pat's amazing, but still, we've got to protect aware of that he's okay with everything.
Yep, he's 100% on board.
Okay.
So he'll be functioning as the contract with the village, but then supporting your event also, right?
Right, yep.
Any other questions?
Seeing as there is no questions, and a motion would be entertained at this time.
I'll make the motion that we approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve a dog walk and park party on August 29th, 2020 for Emma Loves Dogs Foundation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried.
Good luck, you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you.
So with that item being rescheduled, we would now move to the first item of the agenda, which is a consideration of a motion to approve the village board minutes of April 27th, 2020.
Also move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the April 27th meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Next, we have a consideration of a motion to approve the vouchers for payments. This is in the amount of $561,123.93.
This is trustee Walshleger. I make a motion to approve the vouchers for $561,123.93.
I'll second. Go ahead, Jeff.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the vouchers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstain, Walshleger.
I don't know if you can do that.
I don't know if I can do that.
The motion, yeah.
Hold on a second. I gotta see the payment in here.
I don't think you can abstain.
You, you had, you had a payment in there for the.
Did I? Well, then I can't make the motion.
Yes, okay, yeah, you can't make it.
Okay, go ahead.
Hold on, please.
We have to redo.
Hold on. Due to the fact that that motion, the second, and everything that went along with that motion was out of order. If someone wants to appeal the rule of the chair, they can. That motion was out of order, therefore, none of that exists. It can be in the minutes that it was made and then stopped, but as the chair of the meeting, I am deeming that out of order and therefore, it is, it is not good. When I say not good, I mean, it's inappropriate. So the, the agenda item again, is a consideration of a motion to approve vouchers for payments as listed in the packet. I would entertain a motion on that or an appeal of the rule of the chair if you guys feel that I am wrong in, in making that.
I'll move to approve the vouchers for payment of $561,123.93. I second.
It's been moved and seconded to pay the vouchers. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstain.
That motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is considerations of actions related to licenses and permits. We have an application for a restricted species permit. This is Barbara Davis at 721 East Capitol Drive, who would like two chickens.
Also move. Second. Two chickens without a rooster.
It has been moved and seconded for two chickens for Barbara Davis. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. That was unanimous. The next item that we have is an application by Beer Snobs Ale and Eats at 122 Cottonwood Avenue. This is June 13th for Snob Fest, August 15th for Snob Fair, and September 22nd for Oktoberfest. The times would be noon to 11:50 PM on each of those dates.
Now, I'm, do double check. I have August 20, or September 26th, not the 22nd. Oh, I'm sorry. 20, I also have the 26th. I read it wrong. My deepest apologies to the board and those on the meeting.
The 26th is what I have as well.
I make a motion to approve.
It has been, oh, sorry.
I'll second. This is trustee Lutkey.
Sorry, guys. It's been moved and seconded now to approve June 13th, August 15th, and September 26th for Beer Snobs for those events from, at 122 Cottonwood Avenue, from noon to 11:50 PM. Discussion? Steve, my understanding is you're online. If you have anything you'd like to say, feel free to do so.
I am. Well, thanks for, for queuing me in for my time. Obviously, we're excited about the events this summer, as we have in the past. We're real close with the village police department, make sure that we have no issues. It's a great event, I think, for the village. It brings a lot of people and a lot of notoriety, righty, to our village and our great community. We're excited about it and we, we're, we're on board and ready to go. And if there's any questions, I'd love to answer them, but we're going into our fourth year of these events in the summertime and they've all been really successful for us as a business and a restaurant. And I think they bring a lot of people to our community and the village, as noted before.
That's great, Steve. Thank you very much for doing that.
Steve, thank you, but I have a question, sorry. We have no issue with that June date with the governor's orders and everything that's happening in the world right now. There's no, no issues with that date and approving that for June?
I believe that's Donna. Is that Donna?
It is, sorry, hi.
Not a problem, Donna. No, you know, we, we're, we put these obviously into motion quite some time ago. The reason we do that is we like to book out as far as we can for the best music that's available for those dates. And we usually try to get the first pick versus second and third choices. How we're moving forward is a mixed bag. I will admit that. With the Heartland Inn not being open, we can move the, we can open up the street a little bit further south and we don't bump into Rick's entrance into the pharmacy area. You know, how, how are we going to proceed? A lot of different ideas, depending on what actually happens with the Supreme Court rendering its, its decision here any day or any minute and how we move forward. Maybe we would put up barriers and have people, we, we would limit it to X amount of people. We would take chalk or I've even talked to a printer about having space on the, on the, on the street where we would have zones for five to six people and then keep them socially distanced. Our staff can wear masks. We've ordered masks and, and we have masks and, and gloves, those type of things. People obviously serving beer and food, we would do the same thing. The Wisconsin Restaurant Association and the Tavern League have proposed to the State of Wisconsin. I'll read them real quick. All, all employees required to wear masks and gloves. Social distancing of six feet. All tables six feet apart. No tables more than six people. Reduce the premises capacity to 50%. Outdoor eating and drinking within six feet. Distance permitted. No salad bars, self-service buffets, eliminate paper menus and no condiments on the tables. So we're kind of looking at those things, not only for the restaurant and opening up and going to the next step, but also for these type of activities and events that we have this summer. This, the governor yesterday had announced some guidance. So I gathered, gathered those. Obviously, one for food service and restaurant. The other one is for outdoor gatherings. So we can start to look at those type of requirements or suggestions that they're trying to make. Is it going to look different than it has in the past? Yes. Is it going to be a little bit challenging for us and our staff? Yes. But we'd like to go forward. We think that if we do this properly, we use the safe, the proper safeguards that the CDC, federal government, the State of Wisconsin's Health Department have set forth, that we should have a really cool event. Everyone will forget about maybe life for a couple hours and listen to some music, enjoy a cold beer and, and kind of maybe put some normalcy back into, into our lives. Then again, we'll find out what happens here in the next 24, 36 hours, whatever happens. And hopefully, the trend keeps going down and the Badger Bounce Back program kicks in and we can all start to loosen our grip a little bit and, and be safe with this COVID-19 going on.
Can I say something, please?
Absolutely.
We, we just took an oath to to defend our constitution, state and federal. As far as I'm concerned, our rights have all been taken away unjustly. So maybe we should do a better job of defending our constitution and not worry about our idiot governor and what he has to say. That's it.
Well, I'll tag on that if you'd like me to. We're more worried about the event and how it's going to affect the village. And obviously, we're in uncharted waters. We don't know what's next. And we're going to do everything to make sure that not only is the food safety and, and the alcohol distributed properly per the laws, but we want to make sure that we do it in a safe manner for everybody that comes down to our great village and, and I think, what I think is a pretty cool event.
I love your event, Steve. I'm not disputing that at all and I think it's great you want to keep it safe. I'm just saying the numbers I'm seeing don't justify any of this. And we've got all of our rights just taken away overnight and nobody did anything about it. And we're not worried about our constitution at all.
President, this is trustee Lutkey. I'd like the floor.
Well, have yours.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, Steve, I appreciate your hard work that all you and your staff at Beer Snobs have been doing for Village of Heartland and Lake Country and Waukesha County as a whole, really getting what we need to us and allowing us to be able to be safe with your employees through this time. I also want to commend you for coming forth with these applications and permits to try to bring some sort of normal back to our village in some sort of celebratory fashion. And so I appreciate your due diligence and trying to follow the executive order for the well-being of our citizens as well as your staff. So I just wanted to say and thank you and commend you and your staff for the hard work that you've done thus far.
No, thank you very much. You, you know, you, you would not be, well, you probably wouldn't be surprised because you've been around this community long enough, but the loyalty and the community outpouring of our, our restaurant and talking with others and Jerry and Pat and, and everybody. It's been fantastic. So, you know, our life isn't any, is not the same. But maybe for that night, we can all kind of get back to normal.
Trustee Doro and Steve, believe me, I'll be the first one in line for that beer on your night because I love your events, but I always have to ask the question as my job as a trustee to make sure that everything's covered all the way around. I want nothing more than normalcy and everything back to normal and being there and having a beer and enjoying the band, so. But I have to make sure that our police or everything else is on board with everything.
Absolutely, I'm glad. I'm sorry, I might have stepped on you. I'm glad you asked because it gives, gives you guys a hear kind of the thought process that we have with our staff. And, you know, what we're thinking about, how we're planning. And every day, I've got great team members. They're always bringing up things that we can do to make sure that the event goes in accordance with at least what they're asking us to do. And, you know, try to police these events off as we had in the past with great participation within the village. And again, you, you, I always try to get back to normalcy. We, we've obviously went from a dine-in, no reservation restaurant to carry out curbside only. The first couple of Fridays were a total train wreck. But now with our staff, we've got this thing down. We ask for times of, we take them all by phone and we ask for times of pickup. We look at what, what color and car they have. And then our staff has broken up into answering the phone and putting the orders in and expelling the, the condiments and putting them into the runner's hands. And we take them out with proper safety measures of masks and. And we take them out with proper safety measures of masks and our ticket times and our delivery times have, you know, been fantastic. So again, it just kind of tells you a little bit about what we have as a staff and how much we care about our business. And we also care about the community and the village that we all work and live in. And like I said, Donna, I'm glad you asked the question because it gives you guys an opportunity, it gives me an opportunity to kind of tell you what we're thinking. So you just don't think we're going to throw open the doors and let's go. You know, there's a lot of conversation and a lot of thought process that goes into this. But we're going to, we're going to do our darndest.
Trustee Luckey here. Darlene, our village clerk, this question is addressed to you, please.
Yes.
On the applications, we have three applications submitted in our board packet. The second application for August 15th, can you clarify the year date? It looks like it says 2022 as well as the year date for the September 26th application for year 2022.
It's for 2020.
Okay, just wanted clarification, thank you.
Absolutely. You got it.
That's really planning ahead.
Well, we got the toys, we got Detour out of Waukesha, and we also signed up for the fourth year straight Rebel Grace that they just knocked it out of the park. So the only thing I ask for you guys is to say yes to these permits and then pray for no rain.
Sounds good, Steve.
Thanks, Steve, so much.
Thank you, Steve.
Steve, if I could jump right in, let me say one thing just from a preparation standpoint, it's something outside that the village has no control over. If the state of Wisconsin flexes muscle or if there's a big uptick and they keep taverns closed, are you prepared for a situation like that? I know it doesn't actually affect the board, I just, I just wanted to ask because I don't want ever, I believe you can see with this board, I have a feeling everybody wants to approve these and loves the events that you put on and loves that you bring people to the village and loves what you do. I think you can even see that by the customers that come on a regular basis and all of us that come to the events. But are you prepared in case something that we're not expecting happens?
Yes, you know, I came here looking with two, maybe three things to happen tonight. Number one is what I hope happens, which is for you guys to approve it. Number two is for you guys to say, you know, we should table this to find out what's going to happen in the next 24 to 36 hours. Or to not pass at least the first event on the 13th of June. Kind of preparing for all those. You know, some of them are, you know, we have a contract with all of our bands, we could go back to them and talk to them. I've been talking to the booking agents about that. A lot of their acts have, or a lot of their events have been canceled due to not, people not knowing. And then it changes their venues. Our venue doesn't really change with it being at the restaurant. And I kind of put them on notice to say, we're going to see what happens tonight. I was kind of hoping that we'd get a little bit more guidance from the, from the state government by now, but it hasn't happened. You know, I'm kind of a numbers guy and you look at the numbers that are in Waukesha County, you know, they're very small, thank goodness. I've talked to a lot of people that come to the restaurant and, you know, I've only heard of one granddaughter of one of my customers who got sick down at UWM. Four girls that were in the same dorm, all recovered, everything, you know, so you just kind of look at things and you hope that we're a pretty resilient, educated society. And I'll give Lake Country an even higher notch, we're pretty smart out here. So people are minding their Ps and Qs, they're not, you know, doing things that they shouldn't be doing and following the orders. But yeah, we're prepared any which way that happens in the next, whatever happens, you know, with the governor and his decisions going forward with it. So, you know, it's, we're keeping an eye on it every day and, you know, we're trying to get things back to normalcy. You know, I've got all my people working. The nice thing is, is I don't, I don't rent or lease the building, so I own the building. So we stop paying rent from Beer Snobs. I don't take a salary and I'm trying to keep what I call all my gray shirts working because when this thing goes the other direction, we're going to have a pent-up demand where people are going to want to get out. And then we're going to have to get them into our restaurant and do it safely with a lot of things that we've never done before. Reservations and telling people that they have a window to come in and eat and have a beer and relax and that's new to us instead of come on and relax and sit at the bar and, you know, so there's a lot of things we're thinking through to make sure that, you know, we don't put anybody at risk that doesn't feel comfortable. And we still think that there's probably going to be 50% of the volume that's going to be carryout curbside that people just aren't quite ready yet. So now I've got to run two restaurants, one that has seating dining, dine-in, and we have curbside pickup because I don't want to let those people go away. So there's a lot of considerations and, like I said, I think we've got a great staff, a great leadership with us and we'll figure it out as we did the first time, first couple Fridays of fish fries and people all over the place. And now it's down to clockwork where, you know, I'm kissing babies and shaking hands versus running food and doing all kinds of things that I'm not used to doing.
Well, Steve, this is Trustee Myers, and I just want you to know that, hey, the board supports you and all your efforts and you, you got the ball, you have to run with it. The board's done everything we can, we've proved everything, we support you, and it's up to you, just make it work. And hey, don't ever lose your pencil with erasers because you're going to sometimes have to change things. So the board supports you, you run with it and look forward to a cold beer. Thank you.
Awesome.
Great, thanks for all your support, I appreciate it very much.
Thanks, Steve. With that, unless a trustee has anything that they want to add. I believe we do have a motion and a second on the floor to approve that street use, those street use permits.
I thought we voted already.
And maybe we did. Darlene?
No.
We did not vote.
We did not vote.
But we have a motion and a second, correct?
You do.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Steve, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much, appreciate all you guys do for us and really, really appreciate it. Have you guys a great night.
Thank you. You too, thank you.
Bye now.
The next item, sorry, the next item on the agenda that we have is second reading of a bill for an ordinance, 427, 2020, an ordinance to amend Chapter 38, fire prevention and protection of the Village of Heartland Municipal Code. This is that second reading. Obviously, next time when we take this up, it will be the third reading and we will be able to adopt this.
Could we suspend the rules and vote on it tonight?
You absolutely could, you can make that motion, Trustee Myers.
I make the motion, we suspend the rules and vote to approve the ordinance, the adjusted amendments to help the fire department get on their way.
Second, Trustee Walshleger.
It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules. We have to take the vote on that first. So we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So the rules are suspended. With the rules being suspended, we have a second reading of the bill for an ordinance, 427, 2020. It would, I would entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance to amend Chapter 38 of the Fire Prevention and Protection of the Village of Heartland Municipal Code.
Also move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend the ordinance, Chapter 38, Fire Prevention and Protection of the Village of Heartland Municipal Code. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That ordinance is adopted. If you all will allow me, I'm going to take a recess for about three minutes. Sorry, need to take a recess for three minutes. I started that, I had to step away, I'm sorry. So our meeting will be back in session.
President Farnersdale, this is Trustee Luckey.
Sure.
Just in response to the last motion that we passed, we didn't have discussion. I'd like to enact discussion, is that possible, even though the motion is passed?
Absolutely, I am very sorry, Trustee Lucky. I'm sorry, usually I do that, I'm sorry for moving that so quickly.
I just wanted to address Chief Jamrak and make sure that he feels comfortable as though the motion has been moved quicker than the proposed timeline that was given to him recently.
Yeah, that's, we're fine with that, we're still under the state order of no inspections. So once that's lifted, then we're actually going to start our first round. We've been given, through the state order of no inspections, we've also been given reprieve through the state that we don't have to do the inspections on our six months until all this clears up and they figure out if they're going to open it back up again.
Okay.
Yeah, we're ready to go, as soon as we get the okay, we'll get our inspections going, so.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, President, all done.
I'm sorry, Trustee Lucky, I'm sorry, I moved through that quickly, I apologize. If that ever happens again, you can jump right in even when I'm asking for the vote, and that goes for every trustee. If I don't give enough time for discussion, please, I mean, you're entitled to it, just start blurting it out and say, whoa, 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 I want the floor. But thank you for your patience, so. And thank you, Chief. Our next item on the agenda is a consideration of Resolution 511, 2020, a resolution to approve the Suburban Critical Incident Team Mutual Aid Agreement.
I make a motion to approve the suburban mutual incident agreement.
Trustee Luckey, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve that agreement, I'm sorry, to move that resolution, 511, 2020, a resolution to approve the suburban, suburban critical incident team mutual aid agreement. Any discussion? Anybody that would like to provide comment that might not be a trustee?
Mr. President, can I provide some quick comment?
Absolutely, the floor is yours, Chief Miskel.
As indicated in my memo, just some short description on why we're bringing this, it's been a couple years since we updated our mutual aid agreement. And similar to what we did with our SMART, our Suburban Mutual Aid Response Team Agreement back in December of 2018, we added some state statutory mutual aid language that we have to follow via state statute. And then our ninth community, Elm Grove, had joined the SCIT since our last agreement, so we wanted to put them in there as well.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone else for discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That resolution passes. Thank you, Chief. The next item we have is consideration of a motion, I'm sorry, that was number six, we already addressed that, I'm very sorry. Our next item is a discussion and consideration of a request for installation of signage at 145 North Avenue.
As you can see from my memo, that I was approached by the owner of Wild Petals at 145 North Avenue, Lori Huntington, to install this sign to aid her business by allowing customers and delivery people access to a parking spot in front of her building. I invited her to this meeting, I don't know if she's here or not. We did put a temporary sign out and it seems to be working very well, so I'm requesting the village board to approve installation of that sign.
May I ask a question, this is Trustee Walshleger.
Yes, please.
Is that just for one parking spot?
It is for one parking spot only.
Okay, thank you.
And we do have precedent, we have that at another business on Cottonwood Avenue. So we do have precedent for that type of sign.
Thank you.
This is Trustee Connor, I have a question on that, is there stipulation for hours of operation? So after a certain point, it's, anybody can still park there, is it always going to be a loading zone?
She requested a no parking loading zone, but I would be open to hours of operation, it seems to make sense.
Yeah. Trustee Doro, I have a question. The sign, is that going in front of the yellow line that's already there, which I would kind of consider a loading zone? It's right in front of the building?
No, this would be one of the actual parking spots after the restricted parking for the driveway.
Okay, so then I would be in question of the timing as well because there are a lot of businesses on both sides of that street that have loading and unloading. So I just want us to be careful of that we're being conscious of all the businesses around there. So if we're going to put a loading, which honestly, pickup curbside might be the new norm for everybody, that we've got enough around for everyone to be able to have that.
I will install whatever sign the village board deems appropriate.
Mike, Trustee Luckey here.
Yes.
In the memo that you sent, you referred to that you, there's been a temporary sign placed out?
Correct.
As kind of a test, can you give me a little bit more definition of what you mean by a test and how long the temporary sign's been out for?
About three weeks. And I believe the sign that's out there does have time restrictions, only because that's what we had in stock and I didn't want to buy a sign until I had permission from the village as to what sign you guys would like. Does that answer your question? Does that answer your question?
Yes, I, yes, thank you. It does. It clears up, it clarifies. I just, I'm wondering, the test is a little off considering the fact that our streets are as busy as they traditionally have in the past. So that, that was my only reasoning. So three weeks is a long time. So I appreciate that clarification.
Trustee Ro, or Administrator Rhodey?
Yes, Ann.
Um, my question, oh. My question is, what are your signs that you have in stock? What hours of operation do they have on them?
I don't know. I would have to get back to you on that. I don't know what we have in stock. But it, it sounds to me like the board would like the hours of operation to coincide with her business hours. Is that correct?
Well, I, I think if we have something in, in stock already that's probably says eight to five, that would be probably a standard time. I think if we have to order something specific for her with, if we already have one in stock, I think we should use that if that's okay with the owner. Without having to go purchase it.
I'll verify what I have in stock, if any.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
Trustee Doro, and my question, don't we already have a time limit on parking there? Isn't it a couple hours during her time of business as it is?
Yes. But her delivery trucks are moving more than that. You know, they're there for a few minutes and then they leave. And the, if the parking spot is full, then customers or delivery trucks or her truck have to park behind the apartment complex and walk down the hill. That's why.
Mike, this is Trustee Myers. I can't believe we would have separate hours and time for loaded zones. I mean, you would think that the villages would have one, you know, if it's a business, the loading zone is probably nine to four or from the eight to five or whatever it is. But I don't want to go down the street trying to figure out, oh, this has only got two hours. Oh, this one's got three hours. Oh, I can strike you this one five. We don't want that. We want to have one time zone. This is what the, what's the sign's going to be for everybody if they want to have that. I, I don't see us having to come up with special signs. That doesn't make sense.
Yes, this is Trustee Lucky. To, to Trustee Myers' point, my fear is that if we start one time specific for one business, we start opening a can of worms that we potentially have to eat later down. To Trustee Doro's, you know, comment earlier, there's a lot of businesses up and down Cottonwood Avenue and, and limited space for unloading. But I would agree with Trustee Myers. Is that something that we could maybe investigate as to do, we have those loading times? If we do, I apologize that I don't know them right now.
Yeah, I would have to look at the code. I'm not aware of any specific times for loading and unloading, but I would have to verify that.
We just have to come up with one that the businesses can all, you know, this is, this makes the most sense. And let's just have everybody, I mean, I've been in many, large, larger cities and they'd have loading zones for a certain timeframe, and that's it, then it's done. That's just to get inventory. But now we're talking about customers and we have businesses there. We can come up with one common, common timeframe.
Administrator Rhodey?
Yes. Present.
Okay. So I know this was on the agenda, but can this not be incorporated with the other signage that we were discussing?
Yeah, I, I think this one is just a touch different. So basically, the, the, the story that I believe is happening here is because of how her business is on the west side of the street, there isn't a good loading in the rear of the building. She really has to kind of load through the front where the other businesses have the opportunity across the street to load in the back off of the road up away from traffic. And so she's looking for a designated spot in front of her business to do the loading and the unloading. I would agree with, with Trustee Lucky that right now we're at strange times and, you know, allowing her to have a spot there creates a lot of flexibility and at this time, there isn't a lot of traffic, so it's not a big issue. So I, I don't know, short term, you know, the next two, three months, I don't know that it's a, a challenge. As far as finding a consistent time, I think the idea is she's looking for no parking or to it to be a loading zone. Certainly during business hours, I don't think she would care after hours. As long as the next morning, there wasn't any cars there. And I think so, so that issue of people parking at night, say for the restaurant across the street in the evening shouldn't be a big deal, but as long as it's not apartment people who are, you know, staying overnight and then clogging up the loading zone in the morning.
So I guess one of my questions, and she's not on the line, but one of my questions would be typically a loading zone. Well, we, I mean, we have a lot going on. We've been talking about curbside pickup. That would be obviously more towards your hours of four until nine PM. A loading zone, typically the loads are getting dropped off for businesses between the, the hours of nine and four o'clock. I, I feel like that'd be pretty accurate, would it not?
Yeah, I would guess eight, you know, give or take an hour. I mean.
I guess what I'm saying is, does she need it in the nighttime as well and overnight? Because it puts our police department in a, in a struggle if they have to really decide is the person illegally parking or not. But if no one's loading or unloading on Saturdays and Sundays, and they're not doing it after five o'clock, is she looking for all hours or is she just looking to have no one in front of the business during the day so she can unload? That's my, you might have to go to the business and ask that.
It's my understanding that the main problems are during business hours.
Okay, because the sign that I'm looking at that's been proposed says on Saturday and Sunday, even at 1:00 AM on Saturday and 1:00 AM on Sunday and two o'clock in the morning on Sunday and four o'clock in the morning on Monday, that it's a loading zone only. So technically, someone parked there and then went to a friend's house for a half hour and then came back. They are parked illegally. I'm just, I don't like putting a lot on the signs, but I do like doing things for the businesses. But I think we have to hone in on, I mean, maybe we make it a loading, it's a loading zone, you know, loading zone only from, you know, 7:00 AM until 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. You, you know what I mean?
Yes, sir. And I, I put the sign that she requested, but I'm sure she would be happy with any help we can give her.
Okay. This is Trustee Connor. Are, are there any other businesses front and back behind her that would require a loading zone as well? And if so, are they able to use that loading zone because it is a loading zone? Or is that specifically for her? And then do we have to, you know, are we going to take up more parking places if somebody said, well, hey, I got a loading zone for Donna's business. I want one for mine? I almost think we need to think about this, figure it out before we approve it tonight. There's a lot of questions still out there.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's definitely not just for her. It's not her business's loading zone. It just be, it creates a loading zone there at that spot, but not specifically for her.
I guess we'd have to see too. I mean, businesses, is that a central place? There's three on this side, three on this side, or is it all hers and there's five behind? Hey, it'd be great, but I don't want to go all the way up the street to load it. So I don't know. I, I think there's still maybe some questions that need to be answered before we approve it. I, I don't have a problem approving one, but make sure we're doing it correctly.
Yeah.
Trustee Connor.
Do a little bit more research and work with our.
I agree with Rick on that one, too. We've got a lot of businesses downtown and if we let one do it, then who's to say we can't let, or we're not supposed to let everybody do it? If we do that, we won't have any parking downtown.
Yeah, I, I agree, and that's, that's always a concern. I think the one kind of specific issue that she has is she doesn't have the ability, because she's built into that hill there, she doesn't have the ability to load from the back.
From the back, right?
Yeah, I just wanted to see the sign come back. There's not that many people parked over there during the day, in my opinion. That's just my opinion. But to see it go all night long and in the evening time and in the weekends, I would be opposed to that. But also, Trustee Connor's right. If someone is 10 properties away and a truck parks there, it's a loading or unloading zone. That's what a loading zone is. So if someone takes a dolly and wants to walk stuff across the street or they want to walk it, and I really mean this, if they take it two blocks away and they can prove, hey, I was just unloading goods and taking them, they are legally parked because they're not parked there for any other reason than loading, unloading. So it'd have to be, someone will have to express to her, because I don't want the confusion either. When you have a municipal parking spot, especially on the streets, it doesn't belong to anyone. We can put it in front of a business because it helps them and trust, or Administrator Rhodey said it, but it's still a loading zone. If you're loading or unloading and that's the act that you're going through, it is not illegal for you to use that spot. So, Mike, I would ask that you at least stress to her, you know, that she knows that. With that, I, I would like to see the sign come back as it's going to be worded on the poll.
Okay.
But I, there's been no motion, Mike, so you don't have to do that yet. I'm just saying that's what I would like to see, but.
The other thing that I could, the other thing I can propose is the ability to put a loading zone time limit, like a 15-minute loading zone from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. That would open it up to everyone.
Yeah, it'll be open to everyone anyways. We can't, we can't ticket someone just because it's not the business that's in front of them. So that's, I think even Chief Miskel would agree to that. We can't, we would have to sell them that land, give away that parking spot, and it's in the right of ways. We couldn't do that. But I would, I would just like to see the sign that we're voting on, and I think that we need to have it open in our prime times of business, which is the evening and the weekends. So it's open for parking at those times.
Yeah.
There's been no motion, so I'll, we'll see what motion comes forward.
Can we make a motion to table it to further investigate and get more details?
Trustee, you can make any motion you want.
I will do that then. All right. I, I will move to table the consideration for installation of a signage at 145 North Avenue till we get more details, if it's the right spot to put it, what the hours of operation for the loading zone are, just a little bit more definitiveness behind it, so we all feel comfortable in approving it.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded to table this until the next meeting. That would open this for discussion. Mike, if you could work on the wording, that would be helpful to myself as well, and please keep that communication up with that business owner.
Yes, I will.
Just so she knows all the facts. I want, I mean, I hope that she knows that this entire board is wanting to do what's absolutely best for her individual business, but also in looking over the entire area, we, obviously, we just cannot give up a parking spot. So we only want to make it a loading zone while it's being used as a loading zone. We don't want to eliminate a parking spot when someone might be parking there to go to one of the businesses, you know. You know, nighttime when she's not even at her business. Any other discussion?
The only other thing too, I might add, is if Mike's going to go, there is a possible to maybe inquire with some of these other businesses to see if that's something that they would approve and be, be happy to have and try to get a bit more.
Mike can absolutely do that, and any individual trustee can absolutely do that, but that determination, that decision ultimately comes down to the people that are elected to make that decision. So that comes down to us. But any elected official can go and ask around if they want to. There are areas, we have loading zones already. Like Mike said, there is a precedent already. I just, because the sign says no parking, loading zone as presented to the board, I don't feel that happening from between the hours of 9:00 PM or 5:00 PM even, and 8:00 AM in the morning is, is realistic, and especially not on the weekends.
This is Trustee Walshiger. I do also agree that I think eight to five is pretty basic. And if we have some of those already, we may be all set to go. It may not be too complicated if we don't have to order new ones. But I think eight to five is a good, that's your basic hours of operation.
Yep. It's also the time when we have no problems with parking, or for the most part.
Right.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of tabling until our next Village Board meeting?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, that, that motion will be tabled. Thank you, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Our next item on the agenda is, sorry, my screen got really small for a minute there. The next item that we have is a consideration of a motion to award a contract for the 2020 Slurry Seal Program to Struck, to Struck and Irwin Paving in the amount of $30,393.60.
So as you can see from the information provided, we had two companies bid for the Slurry Seal Program for 2020. In talking to the engineer, that's not unusual. There are not that many companies that do that type of work. And Struck and Irwin was the low bidder. These have been verified by Rooker and Milky, and it is below our budgeted amount.
Good, good. Any questions by any trustees?
Trustee Walshiger, Mike, do we have any history with this company?
We do not. We have not done any type of slurry sealing in, oh man, 25-plus years.
Wow, okay.
Where is the company located, Mike?
DeForest.
Okay, by Madison.
Yeah.
This is Trustee Myers. Well, I guess when I look through that, I, I, there is a paragraph in there that says that these people are financial, there was a question about them financially, a, a ability to do this job, and they can do it because they are financially. I don't ever remember any other contract we've had or it ever questioned. So are we questioning the financial stability of this company? Or there was a question that we wanted to follow that up before, but when Rooker and Milky adds that right in that, a paragraph in that discussion, that made me a little bit concerned.
I, I'm not aware of any problem with their, their solvency. Their references were checked by Rooker and Milky, and they've been doing this quite a long time.
That's an Illinois company though, right? DeForest, Illinois?
DeForest, Wisconsin.
It is DeForest, Wisconsin?
It is.
Okay, good. Thank you.
7219 Gene Street, DeForest, Wisconsin.
Okay, thanks.
I, this is Trustee Lucky. I, what I took from that section in the letter that Trust Myers is alluding to is it does state, "Our review did not include an evaluation of bidder's current financial condition, nor their permanent safety program." And I think that's put in there due to the current issue of the pandemic. So they did not do a review of when we want to have this actual work done. They haven't reviewed their finances at this time to make sure they can still fulfill the job. And then I think it's also speaking to their permanent safety program. The business probably at this time does not have that implemented in due to the pandemic. So I think that that has been placed in there in response to the current situation as we move through bids.
Probably another item to mention with that financial statement. Usually, you know, we're doing a road significant cost, you know, 300, 400, 500,000, and we require a bond. And so they, you know, as part of the bid process, we open, they show us that they've gotten a bond. And so that bond basically assures that if they don't finish the project, we'll, we'll be able to use the bond to. we'll, we'll be able to use the bond to cover it. Because this is such a small project, we essentially did a, did a review of their finances. It's only 30,000. If they, if they do have the project and leave, you know, it's not going to, it's not going to ruin the village in any, anyway.
Anybody else? All right.
This is trustee Lucky. I'll place a motion on the floor to award a contract for the 2020 Slurry Seal Program to Struck and Urban Paving in the amount of $30,393.60.
I second.
It has been moved and seconded to, to award the contract for the 2020 Slurry Seal Program for $30,393.60. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Gusevsky. The next item that we have on the agenda is consideration of a motion to approve an agreement with American Leak Detection or Water Leak Detection Services in the amount of $6,400. I'm not sure why that says that on the agenda with American Leak Detection. Is that the name of the whole, the number or the word or is in that name?
Yes, the name of the company is American Leak Detection.
Okay. Well, no, I was just, it says or, so I was just, nothing wrong with it. But anyway, so to read it properly, consideration of a motion to approve an agreement with American Leak Detection or Water Leak Detection Services in the amount of 6,400. Mr. Felton, if you could fill people in.
Absolutely. So as a part of our normal water maintenance efforts, so we, we look for water leaks to try to control water loss. So every year we go out for proposals to, to different companies. There, there's only two companies in the area that do this. This one, American Leak Detection, and the one we had last year was AECom. So we put out a proposal, American Leak Detection lost to them last year. So they said they weren't going to lose this year to them. So what we're doing, what they did is they came in at not to exceed $6,400, which is $108 per lane mile, a water main. Last year, we paid $8,256 to AECom. So we're saving a significant amount of money here. I just wanted to give you a little insight. Last year, AECom, the business that we hired, they found seven leaks. In them seven leaks, they, they figured that we are losing an average of 50,000 gallons of water a day. So this is a really a beneficial program to, to the water department.
I agree, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve the contract with, with American Leak Detection for $6,400.
I second.
It's moved and seconded to approve that contract with American Leak Detection. Discussion? Thank you for the well-explained situation on what we're doing with them, Mr. Felton. No other trustees have any questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Felton.
You bet.
The next item that we have on our agenda is our consideration of a motion to approve contractors' application for payment number two for the Sunny Slope Drive Utility Improvements in the amount of 190,000, 190,453.18.
I'm back.
Hi, Mr. Felton.
Hi. So Musson Brothers Incorporated is the company we hired to do the water sewer and storm sewer replacement on Sunny Slope along with miscellaneous utilities throughout the village. They are over half done with the sanitary sewer on Sunny Slope Drive. And either later this week or beginning of next week, they'll come back to Ray Drive and they'll start the water main and we'll, we'll catch up to the sanitary sewer. And then every but thing on the west side of Sunny Slope will be on the new water and new sewer system. Then all I have left to do is the east side up to, to Merton Avenue. So with that being said, we would like to pay them a sum of, Musson Brothers, a sum of $190,453.18 for the completion of work so far.
Also move that we make a motion to pay the
Second by Walshiger.
It's been moved and seconded to, to, to make that contractor's payment number two for the Sunny Slope Drive Utility Improvements in the amount of $190,453.18. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
You bet.
So the next item we have is a discussion and/or consideration of a motion to authorize reduced liquor license fees for 2020, 2021 licensing period. I'm going to add, sometimes when these things are just thrown out like this, they can get a little bit chaotic regardless of whether we're on Zoom or in the board meeting. So I, I do feel it's somewhat appropriate that I lay a little groundwork and just say, the state usually says it's illegal for us to charge less for licensing. In our case, it's just the relicensing. So it's $500 for everybody. But if we wanted to reduce the costs of that liquor license to assist our small businesses that serve liquor and have those licenses, we can do so. Administrator Rhodey?
I, I think it's well put. Obviously, it's something, sometimes they say location, location, location for real estate. I would say in this case for liquor license renewal, it's timing, timing, timing. We happen to be at that time of year where we're dealing with liquor license renewal. We also have a state order that has closed or significantly impacted those businesses. And so as you can imagine and probably have read in the paper, several communities in our area have taken that $500 fee and, and reduced it. Some have done it by ordinance. Some have done it as an economic incentive. Regardless of the process, we want to use to do that, the question really to the village board is the, the license renewal stands at 500. You are in your authority to, to reduce it to as low as $50 or keep it at 500 or choose any number in between.
Flip a quarter.
Yeah.
What, what have some of the other municipalities done? Or is it all over the board?
So Oconomock, I think, was the only one who did it on a monthly basis. So they assumed that the, the bars would be closed for about three or four months and prorated that way. Otherwise, everybody else who has changed it has just gone down to the $50, the minimal.
Rick, that is a good question. I'm not stepping on your toes here in any way, shape or form. But I do feel that this is one of those, and I know there's a lot of times we'll try to feel out what other people are doing or other communities are doing. I think each community is in their own boat on this. I feel here in Heartland, we're in our own individual, unique situation, as is many other places. I am worried about some of our businesses getting hit hard. However, I do feel that it's appropriate that it be fair. But I feel like there are some, some bars, you think of Triangle Tap and there's one other, but that person that owns it is a trustee, so I'm not going to name it. But like Triangle Tap, it's a standalone. They don't serve food. They just have no way of making income. I feel extremely terrible for that business and other businesses like that in Heartland. But you know, the ones that can serve food, they can make something. It's, I don't know, I, I'm going to kind of stand back on this one and, and, and leave it up to the board to kind of decide what you guys think, you know. I don't know what the right thing to do is here. I really don't. I wish there was more we could do for the businesses. It's got to be tough. But this is a little something that we can do if we want to. It's, it's something we can do. How, how many licenses are we talking?
There, there are 15. And so the memo I put together, kind of the rough numbers you're working with, there's 15 licenses at $500 apiece. Normally brings in $7,500 to the village. If you lowered it to the max, that's 15 licenses at $50 is 750 bucks. So you're talking a swing of, you know, about seven grand roughly. If you go to the extreme or, or anywhere in between there.
And I don't want to touch on this, but I'm going to touch on this because it's important. Obviously, that's a ding on the budget. Like, let's say we went down to the 50, that is a ding on the budget, you know. So it's a, you know, something to think about. But I don't feel it appropriate to sep, well, I don't know if it's even legal to separate and say places that serve food, you guys that can't serve food and are really taking a hit here, you know, you go down to 50. But places that serve food, we're going to cut you off. We're going to divide it by 12 months, that $500. And we're going to cut out three months of it because, you know, you weren't able to really do your full business there. I don't know what the right thing to do is here. I don't know.
As, I'll talk as a citizen for a second.
Okay. Yeah, because I did talk to you about this. You wouldn't be able to vote on this.
Right. Even the businesses that are serving food are not making anything on the liquor right now.
Agreed.
So if you look at it that way, we don't have a separate food license. We do have the liquor license. If you were to ask Steve what his liquor business is right now, he can tell you it's decimated. Along with every restaurant in town. Most of the liquor sales, if not all, are from patrons that come into the business. We can't just give liquor. And some are with smaller bottles. They've ordered them and, and you're giving a bottle and, and in a mix, you know, in a, in a sealed cup to go. But that's really not the norm. The, the liquor business has been hit extremely, extremely hard. So that's all.
Right. No, thank you.
This is trustee Walshiger. Jeff, I think it would be almost a nightmare. It'd be very hard to do the formula and do it different for each level of
I do too.
service. And I think it would just make it easier just to come up with a flat amount for everybody.
I agree. I, I said, as I was saying, I don't even know if that's legal. I was just saying we could do it all like that. But I don't even know if that's legal. I was, maybe I was even talking too much. I was, I was, I was throwing out different thoughts that might be going on.
No.
I don't think it's legal because it's, everybody has the same liquor license, so.
Yep. I agree with you, trustee Cutter. We have a call in, we have a caller that's coming in. Does, is, do they want to say anything? Nope. Okay.
Hello?
Oh, is this Trevor?
This is Trevor.
Did you want to speak on this item?
Um, yeah, I had a, I had something to say regarding.
Okay, Trevor, do me, just, just for, you know how these work with these meetings? If you could just state your name and your address, but then the floor is yours for public comments on this item.
Okay, yes. This is Trevor DeBoer. I'm at 608 Oxford Drive in Heartland. My concern is the impact that these businesses have had in Heartland is, it's pretty bad. And I think with businesses around the communities that are shutting down because of this, we need to look at the long term. So whether it's $500 or $50 for a liquor license is pretty irrelevant. I think we should be giving these businesses the opportunity to succeed long term. When they are shut down, the villages are going to be making nothing as far as liquor licenses or anything. Taxes, everything. We're going to be losing out as a whole. So it's not going to help the village for these businesses to shut down permanently. And they have in Okachi, they have in other communities in the surrounding area. So I think we should forfeit some of the licensing and the cost that they're paying.
Okay.
At least, at least for the year.
Right. And that, this is the right time for you to speak up on that because that's what this discussion is for. Now, just so you know, the state does limit us to go down to a minimum of 50, but I think you already knew that.
Yes.
Well.
This is trustee Lucky. Can I have the floor, please?
Yep, absolutely. It's yours.
So just in reading the memo, thank you administrator Rhodey for putting it together based on our last meeting that we had in this area for announcements and discussions. My stance on this is it's absolutely imperative that we start helping our, you know, businesses to this climate make some changes. And if we can do something like lift a burden on them, whether that is a $50, you know, licensing fee, we should look at that. These types of businesses and the longevity will need to retool and repurpose. And so at this time, it's unknown as to if the establishments will be able to have full capacity of what they have traditionally had to meet their market. So if we can rise to that occasion and respond to them in an economic incentive way, I think that's rap, that's the Village of Heartland rapidly responding to our small businesses in this manner. So I'm absolutely in favor of the board investigating a $50 fee, which would be the lowest amount.
I have to second trustee Lucky on that. I mean, when you look at it, you know, we're talking $7,500 versus 750. Yes, it will impact our, our budget as we proposed it. But I think that's a small price for us to absorb for the, the big price that they're paying right now and will continue. And like I said, even, you know, Trevor brought that up as well as, you know, it, the longer we persevere through this, there's going to be some businesses that might not be able to come out of it. So we have to look at that as well. And like I said, it's, it's an impact on our budget, but I think it's a small price to pay to show our support for the businesses and, you know, rally around them. What can we do when this is lifted to get things back to our, a new norm and help them revitalize from these last few months?
Trustee Myers, I guess my concern is that, you know, how long will we be, if we're closed down for three months, should it be just credit the three months worth of business we don't have? I listened today on the news and they're talking about that small businesses are the ones that are going to suffer because many small businesses are going to, it'll take a long time to get back and they may not fully staff like they used to. You look at the bartenders, you look at waitresses, they're not coming home with the tips or anything. You know, that's, that's, but what about the hairdresser? They haven't worked either. Now, they don't, they have to get a state license. And are we going to go in and credit them on that, hey, you couldn't work for three months? And I guess it's real hard for me to come up to say, well, because this type of business you have, we're, we're going to give you a credit of so many dollars onto your business rather than going to everybody and saying, hey, you know, you're all going to get $500 or, you know, rather than saying, hey, you're closed for three months. We're going to reduce the amount of the fees that you have to pay for those months. At least we, I could justify the backing off on the license fee because you didn't have a license for three months. I don't know what we're going to do with these people that don't have to have a liquor license. They're saying, hey, I'm one of the business. I'd like to have some help too. So that's a concern is that we're going into one segment of our community and there's, there's a lot more small businesses than there are liquor licenses than 15 liquor licenses in our village.
This is trustee Walshiger. Just to add on to what Mike was saying, as a personal example, I was in, within two days of moving. uh was in, within two days of moving into a new office, and when they put this new regulation in place, I cannot move into my new office. I'm completely shut down until they lift that because my new office is gonna be in a bank building. And I can't go into the bank building until the banks can open up their offices. So my business has been shut down also, and it's in downtown Heartland, or will be. But that just tags on to what you were saying, Mike.
So I guess I have a few, I have a few takes on this. And Mike, you brought up a good point, and I'm not debating anyone. But Mike, you you were talking about hairdressers. I know in the Village of Heartland that no hairdressers come to the counter to get a hairdressing license. And I don't know uh how things work on other businesses, but ninety percent of these people go and get a state license. If the state wants to not help people, that's up to them. But I'm elected in the Village of Heartland, and if there's one little thing I can do, I want to do it. And I do agree with Mike. Um trying to figure out a perfect way to jockey this. Uh honestly, I would, I would give a major discount to places like Hoggers and and Triangle Tap. And I'd give a different discount to Ender's, Palmer's, you know, where people were lining up um to get curbside, at least they have some income flowing. Uh and i- and if I could do anything to help everybody, uh I would. Uh one of the biggest things I could do was help by getting on Facebook and telling people, go to the small business, go to small business, go, that's as an individual, not as the elected village president. Incorporating it because I'm the same person. Today, I'll said, okay, things are opening a little bit, get out to those businesses. We need to help everybody. Um I'm so sick of this damn Corona, but it's the first time, I'm sorry for using that word, but I I just, i- if we can help, let's help. Um I don't know if anyone's nearing going under that isn't serving food. I know those, those guys are at least able to pay the mortgage, so to speak, of the rent, but um.
But whether they, but whether somebody, yeah, I don't wanna get into a situation and say, hey, you, you didn't serve food, you, that's too bad. Oh, you did, you're really doing good. You, when you have a business, you operate the business the way you see fit. And for us to come in to say, hey, you're, we wanna help you because you don't, you didn't do this aspect that you could make more money on when you're gonna close down because you didn't know you're gonna be closed down, that's a hard argument. I mean, I look at, I look at the you know, tremendous amount of money I've lost in my business. And uh it's like, yeah, I made some mistakes, but the idea for us to come in to say, because you decided not to operate your business in such a way, you're gonna lose more than somebody else, that's a business decision, and that's a real I I don't wanna become up the person and say, hey, that was a bad idea, or that's a good idea. And uh you're gonna compensate you because you're, I don't wanna look at their financial statement and say, hey, well, you did make money, and so we can't give you as much as we give somebody that didn't make money.
Go on, we can't do that. That wasn't
Uh excuse me, President.
There's no right answer here.
Yeah, excuse me, President, um Trusty Lutkey. Yeah, I'd like to stay on topic with the the specific um liquor license that we have on on the agenda. Um and bring back, I'd like to, I'd like to put a motion on the floor to enact um how do I wanna say this, a motion on the floor for action of liquor licensing annual cost of um for class B license.
Action.
Dollars.
You said five zero fifty, correct?
Yes, sir.
And that is for the twenty twenty, or that's twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, June thirtieth to June thirtieth, correct?
Yes, sir.
Good. Who, someone spoke.
I said seconded by Walshleger.
Oh, think, okay, it's been moved and seconded to set the to set the twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one from June thirtieth to June thirtieth liquor license at fifty dollars. For I, it's been moved and seconded. I have to ask a question on your motion, Robin. Are you intending this only for people that currently have a liquor license and are continuing to pay for service on it, so they may have paid five hundred or ten thousand? Or are you including in that anybody that may come and try to file considering what we've, if this gets moved, anybody that would file for a new liquor license between now and June thirtieth?
Yes, I'll restate for purpose. Um I'd like to make a motion to authorize reduced liquor licensing fee for twenty twenty um licensing period, so for all liquor licensing fee.
For class B?
For class B, yeah, for current and forward for twenty twenty-one.
And I'll second that motion also.
All right, it's been moved and seconded.
I got a question. Does that mean now with that motion that if a business goes out of business, a bar goes out of business, somebody buys it, they can come in and get a liquor license, a brand new one for fifty dollars?
Yes, based on what was just moved.
Because it doesn't matter that they weren't penalized. What they did is they came in and bought a business that was penalized. So they're the ones that are gonna get the benefit, not the people that sold.
Ho- however, let's, I, we don't run into this often with these meetings now, including Trusty Lutkey herself. People can amend a motion. This just got a motion on the floor, and I'm guessing that that's how Trusty Lutkey intended it because we were kinda saying the same things for a second and third time. But I just, I mean, we can, just because a motion's on the floor, that's what, we're in discussion now, that's what debate is for. We could amend this motion ten times. So I walk into the floor, and this is an important issue, so now let's discuss it.
Okay.
Is the floor open? I do agree with Trusty Myers that no one should be able to come in and get a license. If we're trying to protect small business, what does it help us if three people come and say, okay, I'll take my liquor license for fifty dollars? You know, that, it would only be for renewals, in my opinion, and that's what I will vote for. Um
I I I agree with that. I I think, you know, we're we're talking about the businesses that are impacted right now. Um and that's what I think uh when we're talking about the use in liquor licenses for those businesses impacted by COVID as of today and over the last, you know, sixty to ninety days. So um I would be more in favor of taking care of those now, anybody that comes in six months from now for a liquor license, it, I I would think the reduced fee should not apply.
But only for renewals, correct? Renewal of existing businesses.
Uh that's not as it is now, but we can get there, and I'm gonna, I wanna ask Trusty Lut- well, I would just want, Trusty Lutkey, would you be opposed to that amendment?
No, just waiting for one on the floor, President.
Okay, then I'm going to make a motion to amend simply by adding the words to the end of Trusty Lutkey's motion that it is for renewal licenses only.
I'll second the amendment.
It has been moved and seconded to add, to amend the motion to include the words at the end that state for renewal licenses only. Any discussion on the amendment? All in favor?
Hi.
Hello?
Hi. All opposed?
Abstained.
Thank you, Jeff, for catching that. I almost forgot that. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So now we have, sorry, guys, and Trevor, I'll get to you in just a second here. The motion on the floor now says it's fifty dollars, I don't remember Trusty Lutkey's exact wording, but it's fifty dollar renewal fee or or fifty dollar licensing fee for renewals only, meaning you had to have one the year prior uh for this next license coming up. It looks like Trevor would like to speak. Uh Trevor DeBoer, go ahead.
Look, if a business is closing down because of COVID or whatever, the Village of Heartland is hurting. So if a business is closed, we need somebody to get in there as soon as possible, purchase that building, open up a bar, and get their license as soon as possible. If we can give them a fifty dollar liquor license to attract them into the community, then so be it. It's not hurting the community. We're, we're gonna be opening businesses, there's not gonna be a vacant property. So this should go along the way for any new businesses that come in. There will be closed businesses. This is gonna hurt people long term. It already has. As a small business owner, we're feeling the impact.
I don't disagree with that at all. I mean, with the fact that the small businesses are taking the brunt of the impact.
But if these businesses are closing, bars in particular, just liquor licenses, if they have to close, it's a vacant building and you need to get somebody in there as soon as possible. That's gonna attract people to get into those businesses, get their liquor licenses and get running again. We're gonna have to get this community and the business community up and running as soon as possible. We should have been doing it already. We should have taken the approach that Hartford took and start opening this community. We are a village. This isn't the state of Wisconsin. We are our own community. You guys are elected in there. Let's start opening the community, opening the businesses, and we can we can do our own stuff on our own. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Trevor.
Thank you, Trevor.
Thanks, Trevor.
So we do, we have a motion on the floor, and obviously the comments that were just made from the person in the public, obviously he's well known in the public here in Heartland. Um and I mean, I can say right out, he's a great guy. Uh that's something for people to think about. Uh if we do all of a sudden have these businesses closing, we already have one that's sitting completely closed in the very middle of the most prestigious part of Heartland, right there in the middle of downtown. Um so that's something to think about. Uh but I think right now I wanna protect what's open. Um Any other discussion? All in favor?
We already voted, you know?
We already voted.
We already voted, Jeff.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, usually we have discussion and then, I'm sorry, I go on autopilot, I'm, look, everybody's like, what's he doing? I'm sorry, I forgot that we did the vote. We voted, but then I saw it was popping up that it said Trevor DeBoer, and I'm like, I wanna let him speak. I was on autopilot, I'm sorry. And when was the last time we had a two-hour meeting? Cut me a little slack. Love you, Heartland. Um uh the, I I do apologize. Now I'm just making fun of myself because I can't believe I just did that. So that's my way of getting over my embarrassment. Um So now we have a uh discussion and consideration of permanent curbside pickup signs in the downtown. Um we can discuss this a little bit. I think we should push this off. Um uh well, Mr. Roddy?
I'd be happy to comment. So uh we were approached uh when this first started and reached out to the businesses and talked to them about uh curbside pickup and getting some signage. We uh we made some signs uh in the office, I had them laminated, and DPW was kind enough to put out some barricades. We hung those signs on the barricades, and I think they have served very well in trying to trying to work with the businesses to make this happen. Now, fast forward, it's been, uh boy, six weeks, almost seven weeks. Uh it's not the most attractive thing in the world, and so uh we reached back out to the businesses and said, hey, let's get some permanent signage. Uh let's make it look nice. Uh are you guys, everybody okay with that? Uh it's obviously signs we can put up and take down if we need to. It it's really focused for during this COVID event. Um we worked with the bid, asked the bid to kinda coordinate, and of course, uh the downtown businesses all wanted uh different signs, and so we requested that the bid kinda coordinate the sign, so we would just be doing one sign. I'm gonna try something that's probably not gonna work.
No, it didn't, it's not even close, it just dissolved.
So they they basically agreed to a sign that has a person holding a bag, like a takeout bag, that says curbside pickup. It looks really sharp. Um uh the, they they voted to go with that. I I believe there's nine businesses that are participating in having those signs out right now. And if that's something the village board would like to support or would like to give it more consideration, um that's kinda the item on the floor for discussion.
What is the cost of the sign?
Oh, that is a great uh Mike G or Dave Felton or question.
And also, what does it look like?
It's a lot. It's like two hundred bucks apiece. We don't have the look of it yet.
Well, I mean, is it like a sandwich toward like the old sign?
No, like, like a loading zone type thing, right?
Yeah, like a no parking sign, like a, like a eight and a half by eleven.
Oh, okay. And it's about two hundred dollars? Is that what you said?
No, typical sign is uh twelve by eighteen, and they're between thirty and forty dollars, depending on the material they're made of.
Okay.
Are we sure, the people that are doing those curbs, are they gonna continue that once we, let's say in a couple of months when the governor gets off his throne? And are they gonna continue doing that curbside picking, or are they gonna try to get the people inside where they're making money?
Yeah, I'm gonna take the floor for just a second. Can I, can I say something on this? This actually all started, I was contacted by the owner of Palmer's, who said that he intends, um you know that his son had lung transplant, so he's very familiar with people that are what's considered very high risk. His, him looking forward with his business was that he intends to do curbside pickup and allow it. He believes there will be people for a long time. I do too, not a ton of them. There will be people that only wanna do curbside pickup, they don't wanna get out of the car, they don't wanna be exposed to anybody, but they still want good food. He said, hey, we have all these temporary signs all over, you know, sandbags on them and all that kinda stuff, but once, he was more asking, once they open, shouldn't we uh, what, what would I need to do to get a sign that just designates that for curbside pickup so we can run the food out to them? At that point, I kinda put it out to the bid. Originally, I was thinking even maybe we can get the bid to kick in, like half the money, blah, blah, blah. But this wouldn't only be for bid businesses, so I gotta be careful. Um but uh asking what they could do to get a sign in front like that, and I said, that's a great idea. We wanna help the businesses. If that's something you're interested in, we'll see what we'll work on. So uh yes, I do, I'm not saying every single business, Mike. What I would like to do is any businesses that decide they wanna sign from us, unless the business is gonna pay us one hundred percent for the cost that they decide now uh that they wanna sign, so we're not ordering them two and three different times. But yes, I think there's some that are gonna want that curbside pickup only sign.
Okay, so are we, are you talking about we're gonna have a loading zone sign and it'll be a big apartment? Now we're gonna put a, a sign up that says for pickup only?
Curbside pickup five to nine, curbside pickup parking only, five to nine. I haven't seen, Tim Roddy may have seen the sign, I didn't see it yet. Originally, what I thought it would be is curbside pickup only from five to nine sign, meaning you can park there normally any other time of the night. Uh that was originally my thought, but I guess some other owners.
I think it's a great idea, but have you ever watched people try to parallel park downtown? Normally, you parallel park and you're in the restaurant for an hour, two hours. Now you're gonna have people parallel parking every five minutes in the busiest time of day. What's that gonna do to the traffic?
That's why I explained that it was coming from Palmer's. Keep in mind, Palmer's, there's an alley right there. There is no parallel parking because the people pull, that's why he wanted that spot. It was not his fault, it was me. Instead of just coming and asking for his one, I thought maybe the other business, and then it just kinda blew up. Uh the owner of Palmer's was asking if he could have a spot. In his case, it's not a parallel park situation, because you know they have the alley there.
Yeah, no, I, yeah.
Back for a spot, so there would have been none of that issue. But I, I'm not disagreeing with you on other places might have parallel parking.
Looks like Administrator Roddy has the sign. Um if you guys can all see his video cam, he has the sign in front of his video for you all to see.
Tim, if you would talk, your, your screen would light up.
Could I sing? Would it also light up if I sing?
No.
Absolutely.
Except for it doesn't, you gotta add the hours to it, but other than that, that's good.
But Jeff, what
I have a question.
Up and
Trusty Walshleger, and then I'll get to whoever was next.
That was Connor.
So then can Zesty's also use that same spot, or is that spot just for Palmer's? I mean, we're running, you've got some businesses that are again, is this gonna be designated, Palmer's has one, Zesty's has one?
And absolutely. If Zesty wants to do curbside pickup and walk that And absolutely. If Zesty wants to do curbside pickup and walk that stuff 75 yards down to the, in front of Palmer's, absolutely they can. And vice versa. If Zesty had one and Palmer's wanted to walk it down there, they could do it. I'm guessing they don't wanna compete, but technically, absolutely they could.
I wanna just verify that for the public, so.
No, 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 but I'm saying you're right. Now, it's, I think it's highly unlikely, but yes, let's say all the parking is full. There is a chance someone from Zesty might pull in front of there, and yes, they would not be doing anything illegal if they were there for curbside pickup. Now, if they parked there and they walked to Zesty, there's a problem. But if they park there and walk into Palmer's, there's a problem also because it's curbside pickup. So no, that's a good point. But yeah, I don't think we'll run into a problem with it, but some of those places that are closer together, maybe we could. Uh, the same thing could go on with beer stops and enters.
But I think this way we're keeping our signage rules kind of basically the same across the board.
Oh, absolutely. If it's on the street, anybody can use it as long as they're using it for the purpose. It's not for the business.
Right.
It's for the purpose.
Correct.
Loading is for loading. Curbside pickups for curbside pickup. Yep.
Well, then maybe we should specify that we have one curbside pickup on one side of the street and one area for curbside pickup on the other side of the street, and that's it. The businesses on the north side use the north one. The businesses on the south side use the south one. Period. That way nobody, no other business can ask for one. Otherwise, we're gonna have everybody asking for a curbside pickup, and again, we won't have any parking downtown again.
This is Trustee Lutkey. I just have a question, um, and I apologize if I, if I missed it, and it was part of the, uh, or when you introduced it. Is this just for restaurants, or does the, you know, pharmacy that's downtown on East Capitol Drive have an ability to continue curbside if that owner is helping the elderly and needs to get the, their prescriptions out to their car? And that is becoming quite a benefit to, um, consumers across the nation is curbside, um, for whatever reason. Two, I believe Palmer's point, right, which is why Palmer's, it sounds like, brought that up to President Fannerstall. So would curbside only be for restaurants, or could it be available to business in general?
Now, I, it honestly, originally, and maybe I complicated this by putting it out to the other businesses, like I said, the owner of Palmer's just said, I, he planned on doing this indefinitely. He was the one with the idea, uh, and so it was supposed to kinda be a quick thing. Uh, but no, if, if a business wanted it, that's truly gonna use it, no. I'm gonna say this, when you have, well, I don't know. You're right, because we get into picking and choosing. It would be very unfortunate if a business who only gets one customer a night shows curbside pickup signs, which is locking up a spot down on Heartland, as opposed to a restaurant like Zesty, Enters, Palmer's, um, uh, Tabby's gets a lot of people pulling up. Um, I think I already said Enters, uh, Phoenix, any of those where they're getting 50 and 60 cars in a night. And if you just had someone that said, "Hey, I just want one," that'd be tough. I mean, if I'm going to pick up jewelry from a place or a shirt or something, yeah, I can park and walk. They're not doing curbside anyway. This is for curbside pickup when they're bringing stuff out. I know Hometown Pharmacy does it, but other than that, the only people I've seen doing that mainly is the restaurants, but I don't know. Maybe I complicated it, but it's a, it's a tough thing. But I don't, Trustee Lucky, I'm not sure, but technically I feel like, yeah, we probably would have to allow that if they really wanted it, but I'd like to see four-hour windows at least. Because I know like Palmer's is runs from, I'm gonna say 4:30, and they're done pretty much by 7:30 at night. I think Enters and Beer Stabs, a lot of them, you know, their main hours are like that also, so we don't wanna lose all our parking, but at the same time, we're just trying to fit ourselves into a new scheme kinda thing.
But again, that, this is Walsh Lager, the, the drugstore. Now, of course, they have completely different hours.
Right, so we're just throwing them under the bus.
Oh, I'm not throwing them under the bus at all.
No.
I was saying they're the only business other than, uh, food that does it, and they've done it for a long time. In fact, I posted today that Hometown Pharmacy is the only pharmacy in Heartland that you're gonna find that does, uh, curbside pickup.
I agree.
Long before COVID-19 and always delivers, so I'm definitely not throwing them under the bus.
I, well, good, because they're the best pharmacy in town.
I agree.
When do you get that 20 bucks?
No, no.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, is that a motion? Uh, let's stick on topic here, though. I don't know if you guys wanna wait on the sign, do, should we do a little more, um?
Hey, hang on, let's go back to Tim.
This is the first time it's been in front of the board?
Go back to Tim once. He's got the background for it.
Yeah.
Look at, look at the parking downtown, Tim. Tim, talk.
Yes, I'm talking. I'll get out of the way.
There you go.
How does that look?
Picture curbside parking in front of all those businesses. That's all.
Get a talk.
So, so what I will say is right now we have nine, the DPW put up nine curbside pickups, uh, in, in and around the downtown, uh, including the Hometown Pharmacy. Th- this was meant to kind of, I, I guess the gist of this conversation tonight was more about trying to spruce up those barricade, hand-done, uh, sandbag, being held down by sandbag signs and try to put something a little bit more impressive because this isn't going away overnight. Uh, we, we are certainly in tough times. We, we, we're trying to respond to the businesses. Uh, I think the businesses are, are asking for this, and we're trying to respond to that. The reality is, I, I would agree, uh, with Trustee Hanson and Trustee Meyer, uh, the minute things go back to normal, I think most of these businesses would rather have the parking spot than the curbside pickup, but some of them, some of them might not. So I think, I think we gotta stay flexible and try to keep working with them to try to accommodate as best we can while keeping the integrity of, of the downtown parking, you know, when, when it does return some kind of integrity so that there are enough spots.
No, I, I agree with you. It just, I, I think that if we do that, we do it like a loading zone. You know, there's one on each side of the road, or one on one end of the town and one on the, uh, or two on one end of town and two on the other end of town. Gotta work at that everybody can use the curbside pickups, but we don't wanna overwhelm downtown with curbside pickups.
This is Trustee Walsh Lager, as Jeff was just saying, but, um, the signage that was behind Tim in front of Hometown Pharmacy, if you notice, there were two signs next to each other, and you're gonna add a third sign right there. That's a lot for somebody to look at when they're driving past there. So we don't wanna get too much signage either.
Right.
I think that it's best that we, uh, just push this off, um, and table this until the next meeting or ax it. And I am going to suggest to the owner of Palmer's to come in on his own when we're all in person and request it, because there's nowhere that parking is needed more, and he can request one individual sign. I think it was a huge mistake of myself to toss it to all the businesses. It sounds too difficult. And I think that if the owner of Palmer's were the most highly, uh, needed parking is in the entire village is standing in front of us, then it'll pass, no problem. I just think it's better to push this off.
I agree.
So with that, I think that we could just take no action on it. We can move on from it. Um, the next item we have is consideration of board and commission and committee appointments as presented by the village president, Jeff Fannerstall. Um, I have, still have appointments to make for Police and Fire Commission. Uh, the person that was up for that appointment has moved. That's a five-year appointment. I wanna get that one right. I do not have that appointment set yet. Um, I do have an appointment for Delhart. As you know, Rick Connor and his schedule has become an extreme. It's become very difficult for him to get over to that meeting because it starts at 5 o'clock. Uh, my appointment that I put in front of the board hoping for approval is Trustee Lutkey as a representative for the village of Heartland. Um, she will be serving with Trustee Meyer, Doral, and Hanson on that board. I, I look for, uh, I'm hoping for board approval on that. I also have talked with Trustee Lutkey, and she's showing a deep enthusiasm, um, and excitement for, for the library and thinks it is an institution that's, you know, a good pillar, part of the community. Uh, a- and she showed some excitement in being on there and wants to do it in my talking with her. Uh, and so I also would like to nominate, uh, Trustee Lutkey to be the, uh, village board representative on the library board over the course of the next year, which actually would have started on 4/30/2020, but it goes until 4/30/2021 that term.
I make a motion to approve your appointments.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the appointments, both appointments, uh, one being Trustee Lutkey to Delhart Board, and one be Trustee Lutkey to Library Board as the village board representative. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Abstained.
That motion is carried. Um, the next item we have is consideration of a motion to reschedule the May 25th village board meeting to May 26th due to the Memorial Day holiday.
I make a motion to move the May 25th village board meeting to May 26th due to Memorial Weekend.
I second. Trustee Lutkey.
It's been moved and seconded to move our meeting to the 26th of May instead of the 25th of May due to the Memorial Day holiday. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. The next thing we have is discussion and consideration of a motion to approve the 2021 budget preparation schedule.
I'll move to approve the, uh, um, 2021 budget preparation schedules was in the packet. I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve our 2021 budget preparation schedule.
Yeah, just real quick, obviously all of this is subject to whatever happens with COVID-19. Um, we do have the September 16th, September 17th budget workshops. Those were, are planned to be in the village boardroom as normal. Um, obviously, we'll see where we are in September, but it's really the only thing on here that is, uh, an in-person item for the public. And, and then obviously the public hearing.
You're getting to look more like me.
Trying, trying real hard. I don't have a bird.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Uh, we have announcements. Trust, or, uh, Administrator Rhodey, you got any announcements?
I feel like I could talk forever about the ever-changing, uh, COVID, uh, governor, state Supreme Court, but I, I think we, I think we all are, have had enough of that. Uh, very proud of the staff, uh, Police and Fire doing a phenomenal job out there every day. Uh, de- dealing with people and dealing with the effects, uh, and trying to balance that is not easy, uh, but they are doing a great job with that. Uh, and we just continue to wait for directions and try to play by the rules, and, and hopefully the rules will get clarified here uh, with some state Supreme Court. Uh, all the people who were in the know said it was gonna come out Thursday, then they said it would come out Friday, then they said it would come out today. So apparently, uh, kind of like, uh, predicting the draft, uh, they are wrong, so we will continue to wait. But, uh, big, big Plan Commission meeting via Zoom, uh, next week, Monday, uh, we have St. Charles Development, uh, addition to the church as well as the Lake Country Lutheran. Uh, those are two big projects, and we hope to take two big steps forward on both those projects uh, next week, Monday, on the Plan Commission. With that, I, I'll, if anyone has any questions, uh, happy to answer or can answer them off.
I just wanted to add DPW to your list, Tim. They've been doing a great job. They've been working a, a split shift and, and they kept up with everything, and they've just been doing an outstanding job along with Police and Fire and everyone else, Darlene and the office staff, and, um, they really haven't missed a beat.
Absolutely. Even the library, you, I'm, I am just shocked at the amount of people
Yeah.
picking up books.
Could I make a, could I make a, uh, comment or request? This is Trustee Walsh Lager.
As long as it's an announcement.
Well, um, I've noticed a lot of people out on their bicycles, which is great. Everybody's getting exercise. Um, but I would ask also that sharing the road with the cars at the bicycle is, um, remember to follow the rules of the road and stop at stop signs and let us know when they're turning. I happened to just miss somebody who was going right through the intersection of Hill Street, North Avenue, and Capitol, didn't stop for any stop sign at all. And, um, I love seeing people out getting exercise, but I would just request that they also abide by the signs on the road.
Yeah, that would be great. Stop riding two and four wide
Yes.
when cars are behind you. It's supposed to be single file. They've got three feet from the curb is theirs and three feet around bar cars.
Well, I, 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 you know, almost hitting someone, if I hadn't anticipated ahead of time, I would have hit them. And, um, I just anticipate they're not gonna stop. But it would be nice, they would follow the same rules. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else have announcements?
I do. This is Trustee Connor. Um, I just wanna do a shout out to, I don't know if, uh, Chief Toren's still on the, uh, the call or not, but, uh, to the entire, uh, Heartland Police Department, as this is National Police Week, so, um, just wanna recognize the entire Heartland, uh, Police Department and the great job they're doing during, uh, um, every day, but more importantly, because it's National Police Week.
Here, here.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Well, with that, uh, Trevor DeBoer was on, and he, he's on Milwaukee SWAT, so we might as well give a shout out to him too. But no, our-
There you go, Trevor.
He's fantastic. Oh, Trevor. Um, anybody else for announcements?
I'm actually have an announcement. I wanted to just say how much I appreciate the chief, both chief of police and chief of the fire departments, memos that we receive, we, uh, when we receive them from our village clerk to the board. They're really well-written and really well-done. They're easy to follow, and it really gives us a quick snapshot, um, at the things that we need to know, especially during a situation, um, that we're all facing. I have referred to those in the past, and I welcome them to keep coming forwards because I enjoy reading them. And I, I'm not sure if it's something that you like to do, but I just wanna say thank you for doing it because it really is helpful, um, to us. So thank you.
Thank you. You're right.
Thank you. You're right, Robin.
I just a couple of things. Um, I put some of this out in my, my weekly bulletin, but I did wanna make sure some of this did get to the attention of the board for sure. The DNC obviously has been moved, and with that, the, the Milwaukee Police Department has updated their agreement. Really, the only things that were updated were a lot of dates relevant to the DNC. And then now they've actually been accepted for that grant where before it was, uh, pending that grant approval. So those are the, the main pieces of that. But since it was very minor in nature, one of the ways, uh, options that they had left with us was that we just use our prior signature page, but since we did that, I wanted to make sure the entire board knew of just the, basically the date change to that DNC agreement. Also, last week, um, we, we did respond to another heroin overdose. And again, um, thanks to Officer Greenwood's quick reactions, one, just making, being able to make contact with the person, but then two, recognizing the situation, delivering Narcan, he saved another individual's life, and that's the second time he's done that within the last two weeks. So he's been staying busy when it comes to that. Um, I know some of you have been involved with, uh, the criminal damage we've had at our cemetery with some of your constituents. We have identified the actors responsible. They have not been very cooperative. But with that said, um, we were able to get some information online through some court orders, and, uh, we believe we have a fairly good case where we've referred 22 counts of felony damage to four separate individuals, so.
Awesome.
We'll be holding some people responsible for, for that damage, and then also for potential restitution to the village um, for any of the money we spent cleaning that.
Thank you, chief, for following up on those.
Thank you.
Wait, it's very nice.
And then, um, one other, one other thing was the state has got a, a process in place for N-95, uh, decon program. We are all set up, both police and fire, to take advantage of that when we need to. So it's just another way we can stretch our PPE to make sure our first responders are properly equipped, but it's a process that we actually send in the mass- But it's a process that we actually send in the masks. They have a decon process and then they actually send them back for use and they could do that up to 20 times per mask. So we'll be taking advantage of that. And then I know Administrator Rhodey touched on this last piece, but the governor did come out with a new order, emergency order number 36, which did just a little, a couple of little things, but for us in Heartland, it really just relaxed some of the restrictions for in-person retail. If you have an entrance to the outside and you can have up to five people in your establishment and that's effective immediately. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? This meeting is adjourned.